Everybody switch your microphones on. And please put your cell phones away. And remember that if you want to say something, board members, please be sure to get your wait to be recognized by myself. I'll see if I can speak. Thank you. Penny Burson.
Here.
Mitch Freeman. Heather Kinderman.
Here.
Todd Moses.
Here.
Anne Paulson.
Here.
Amy Wilsonson.
Here.
Amy Spires.
Here.
Kim Swanson.
Here.
Get your cards.
Here.
Okay, we have court of conductiveness. The main answer is we're going to wait. Okay, would you please stand for the questions?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My mission statement, the school district of Menominee area by embracing the unique needs and using the strengths of our diverse community is dedicated preparing all students to become lifelong learners, caring individuals, and responsible citizens. Okay, we have some recommendations and accommodations. Oh, I'm sorry. Agenda order and critical revision. Will you take any? Seeing none, I guess we don't get any agenda changes. Okay, thank you. All right, now recommendations and accommodations.
Sarah Anderson. Karen Jansen. Sandra Quilling. And Margaret Colvin. So the Board of Education, the school district of Menominee area recognizes Margaret Colvin for her 21 years of dedicated service, Sarah Anderson for her 30 years of dedicated service, Karen Jansen for 22 years of dedicated service, and Sandra Quilling for 27 years. Dedicated service to the student, staff, and Menominee area school district community.
Thank you so much for your service. Thank you, we appreciate it very much. There are some other retirees as well, and they will also be being their certificates if they were able to attend tonight's meeting. Thank you. Okay.
And if you could make it to Madison. Just kidding. So the Board of Education, the school district of Menominee area recognizes Bryce Bedford for receiving the Wisconsin Association Association of Colleges for Teacher Education Pre-Service Educator Mentor Award. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, next, if I went on you?
Okay, tonight we have some Menominee high school students to do an overview of their internship experience with Wisconsin Credit Union. So welcome and come out.
So I'm Adam Badowski, and I'm a junior here this year at Menominee High School in the internship program.
And I'm Stephanie, and I'm just senior in turn.
And we'll be going over our internship experience and the importance of it. So first, we started off the year with a situation called a lunch of learn. So we had two during the year, one in the fall and one in the spring. And first, we set out surveys to the entire school to figure out what information we would like to be teaching the students on. And this was just teaching them about financial literacy. And in the fall, we taught them about the purpose of our location and what what signs it is, and the importance of us being there in the high school. And then in the spring, we did a feature on saving money and how to save up for colleges and kind of the importance of having money for after-race experiences.
So another event we do is our Making New Funk. So throughout the whole month, we do financial literacy games or organize events. So we did, we had all those students write down their goals, and then we went into the personal financial management classes that the juniors go through, and then they came to them as well.
We also did an event called Mad City Money, and this is a real-life budget simulation for juniors. And some seniors also were invited to this. And it kind of covers them through the rooms that we have within the gym of our high school. And they go through automobiles and house payments and shows them what kind of realistic situations that they have to go through monetarily after high school and just kind of gets them prepared for that.
So then following back from what I just talked about, we did morning connection formerly known as MOC every day. It was like a 30-second. It was an interview, and we talked about the Mad City Money event and then what we were going to do there.
And then we did promoting in our community needs. So this is kind of a fun way to get ourselves out there and get our Wisconsin's name out there and kind of show the community the importance of Steph and I being in the internship program and kind of teaching both of us about marketing skills and just really getting involved with the community, which is important.
So having fun with Wisconsin, these are just some pictures highlighting the things we did throughout internship. So on the left, just doing a basic transaction at the high school, and then a couple of pictures of our lunch and then the Mad City Money.
And then on the right top corner is me and some training session, which is kind of fun. We got to fish, and then on the bottom, that was a picture taken at Mad City Money. And so just obviously, we held a funner internship. It wasn't just learning, it was building our character and personality.
So then my experience, I just wanted to say that I gained so much knowledge and I've had a lot of opportunities that I won't have had not being working for Wisconsin. I learned how to communicate effectively female in person and then learn from my mistakes and taking ownership of me as well.
My experience was also phenomenal. I had coworkers and supervisors that taught me life lessons every single day when I was coming to the workplace. And obviously, as I'm a school student, I learn material in the classroom, but I learned extraordinary valuable lessons working at Wisconsin Credit Union that I wouldn't have learned within the classroom. So my supervisors taught me professional development, communication skills, how to time manage myself, and be responsible. And again, my experience was phenomenal, and I'm excited for next year as a senior.
And then we just wanted to say thank you for letting us be here today.
Thank you.
Actually, I'm on TV.
Once in a lifetime opportunity.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, next is student representative communication. And this will be our last time with our two student representatives. And that is Corinne and Kaylin. So take a wave.
So for sports, the Lady Mustang Soccer is having a great season. They just beat Chippewa Falls 10 to 1 on Tuesday, and the JV team also won 2 to 1. They also played them on Saturday and won as well. The program is moving in the right direction, and the girls have a lot of pride in the program. Tonight, track is competing at the BRC Conference Meet at North High School, which is where Kaylin is tonight. Baseball has three games this week leading into their playoff season starting next week Thursday. They are ranked fourth in the conference. Softball also has two games this weekend and are heading into their playoff season starting next week as well. Golf has their BRC Conference Meet on Thursday. Granton Sanjay is currently leading the team and is third in the conference. Tennis just competed at the BRC Conference Meet last weekend, and Jackson Trunkel and Victor Kaufman made first team out of conference. Most clubs and extracurricular activities are winding down. Student council elections for next year's council have started this week. Students voted on a student body president today. The rest of the executive council will be selected tomorrow on Tuesday. And class officers will be voted on by students on Wednesday. FFA had their annual banquet last Friday night to wrap up another great year. The spring swing took place this past Saturday, and as always, was such a fun event. DECA took four people to the international conference at the end of April. Students competed and participated in different leadership academies for learning their leadership for the future. The senior awards ceremony was held last week on Monday night. A variety of awards and over $100,000 total in scholarships were given out to many students. Last Monday, there was also a reception to honor this year's 26 GAC Global Scholars. As a group, they volunteered more than 500 hours of community service for their projects. We are very proud for the state certifications that they have earned and the global citizens that they have become. There is an orchestra concert next Monday, May 20th, at 7:00 PM in the high school auditorium. Choir will also have their annual spring concert in just over two weeks on May 30th to wrap up the school year. Mrs. Buster in the health department would like to give a big shout-out to student council for the grant to buy LED mannequins. These mannequins give instant feedback regarding compressions and high-quality CPR. The senior farewell assembly will be Thursday, May 23rd, followed by the senior picnic Friday, May 24th. And graduation is taking place in just three weeks on Sunday, June 2nd. Following this ceremony, there will be a lock-in for all of the graduates put on by the MHS senior parents who have raised over $14,000 in prizes for seniors. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them too.
Seeing none. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
We appreciate hearing from you each first meeting of the month.
Thank you for the gifts, too. I'll do calendars tomorrow.
Best of luck to you. Okay, now we're at the community communications. And we do have some, but before you come up, I'd like to just read a statement just so that we can be clear of what is expected. This is the time for board members to listen to your concerns and free to express your opinion on issues. You are speaking at a public meeting, and your comments may appear in the newspaper and other news media. All individuals who comment during the public comment period are reminded that the information provided this evening is intended to provide information to the board so that it can fulfill its role. In that vein, all parties are reminded that all information offered be truthful and honest. False statements or stigmatizing charges may subject the individual making such statements to legal repercussions, including, but not limited to defamation claims. Comments that identify students shall be subject to the Wisconsin Public Records Law in purga. As such, student information that is not directory data designated by the board, for example, individual student behavior or progress records, shall not be discussed in this forum. Comments that identify personnel are subject to the applicable Personnel Records Statute in Section 19.3610, Wisconsin Statute. The board may inform the speaker that his or her comments are not permitted in the opinion of the board. It is not subject to release under the above applicable standards. Even with above disclaimer, please note that a period of public comment is a type of designated form for speech that generally speaking has a substantial degree of protection under the First Amendment, including a requirement of G-point neutrality. The board typically will not respond to questions or concerns in this portion of the meeting. Please indicate if you would like the board president to direct a member of the administration to respond to your concerns. With that being said, Mike Katner.
Hello there. I just wanted to thank you guys for the sports you've given us in the past. I'm going to give you an update on what's going on. Three years ago, you guys approved for us to have the Menominee Mustang Track League shoot as the league's school sport. And over the last three years, they've competed fantastic. We have four different divisions, an entry level, advanced entry, junior varsity, varsity. They just competed this last weekend on the O'Clara Conference Shoot. There was 600 kids that shot and competed over there. It ended up our season. We have our end-of-the-league fun party this next Sunday. Our varsity took second, or third place, our JV took third place, our entry level took second, and our advanced entry took second. Over the last few years, we've actually placed in all four divisions all three years. The kids have been fantastic. This year, we've had about 52 kids, we had 15 girls. We, last year, at the conference shoot in O'Clara, one of our students shot 100 straight. He won the tournament high overall for everyone. For the last two years, we've taken kids to Nationals. The first year, we took two kids, and one of our kids placed fifth place. Last year, we took five kids, one of them placed third place. This year, I had seven kids going to Nationals. Our state shoot comes in June. We actually have 20 kids going to state this year. The club and the kids have been fantastic. We did fundraisers, they've raised between $15,000 and $20,000 to help pay for their rounds, shooting, their entrance fees for competitions and everything else. We've actually got 17 sponsors through the community that have also helped us with sponsorship fees and everything, where we put their names on the back of our sponsor shirts and everything else. Tom, it's a pass, I forget everything I'm saying. In conclusion, I just want to thank you guys for your support. The kids have done fantastic. This is one of the best sports there is as far as the fastest-growing in Wisconsin, as far as the youth shooting program. The nice thing about this program is we also get the parents involved. This is one of these sports where actually the kids and the parents can compete and actually shoot together and have fun. We have about 10 families that actually go to outside events and have competed with their kids at these. So if you guys have any questions, I'd be more than willing to answer them for you guys. If not, I want to thank you guys very much for your support.
Thank you. Next, Adam McGovern. By the way, you have three minutes. And you could also provide copies of what you say. You don't have to, but that would be really important, just so that we have a record.
I have a system of old behavior, right?
Sure.
Good afternoon. Oh, sorry. Good afternoon, my name is Adam McGovern, and I'm a junior over at Menominee High School. I've come to speak to the school board to raise awareness about mental health issues within the high school and offer some ideas on it. For my presentation, I brought some printouts containing the main points and ideas. Knowledge is important, and I believe in the high school, what's happening to the students often gets overlooked in the context of mental health. There seems to be fog between the school board, teachers, and students about topics on mental health and the LGBTQIA community, through no one's specific calls. From the parent's view and the teacher's view, and any view from anywhere but within the high school, it can be hard to see what's going on. As a student, I can tell you we have issues with cutting depression, anxiety, and LGBTQ mental health, and more, which is a problem I would love to talk more about, but you probably already knew that was an issue, and I don't need to reiterate that. Instead, I came here today to bring up what I feel like is the fog between the faculty and the students about mental health. With this fog, it's hard to understand what can be changed and how to really help the students. Essentially, the students don't know what the faculty's doing with mental health, and the faculty doesn't really have a chance to hear from the students on a regular basis in a more formal but meeting setting. For my first suggestion, I would recommend a student board, where a collection of students would talk to the faculty and bring up suggestions, talk mental health issues going on in the high school and areas that might get overlooked, providing the student perspective. I'm aware not all students can offer feedback and suggestions, but some really can, and the counselors who work here could definitely find some students, and I'm even willing to talk to the board myself. I believe this would be extremely insightful for both the board and students, as I hope they can bring up some of the suggestions that we'll also have tonight. Another point I'd like to bring up tonight is the gender-neutral bathrooms. I know the topic of LGBTQIA, especially in Wisconsin, but there are a few things I'd like to mention, specifically the gender plans. I'm aware of their existence, and I'd like to point out the need to come out of the closet to get one. If you wish to use a proper restroom, then you must tell a teacher and a counselor and any teachers who might question why you're going to a gender-neutral restroom. Our proposal is to make up a few gender-neutral bathrooms you have around the school and make it known that the bathrooms can be used. Those students should be forced to confront their identity and share it before they're ready just to use a restroom. For my last suggestion tonight, I would also really love to see the community being taught. By this, I mean having students be able to talk to the teachers about mental health and LGBTQIA, and having community members be able to speak on their experiences in high school with teachers and students. I hope this speech at least starts a conversation and hopefully makes the communication between students and faculty about mental health a little less foggy. I know the road to improving mental health is a long and hard one, but I really hope as a community, we can make a difference. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Madison Wayne.
Hi, my name is Maddie. I would just like to say that like the things that you guys do do help and they are great, but there's some other things that you guys could be doing, like educating your teachers about mental health and how they could be helping. Just if a kid would like to talk to a teacher, the teacher would know what to say or what not.
Thank you, Madison. Jason Collins.
Hello, I'm Jason Collins, a community stakeholder, parent, and an eighth-grade teacher from the building. I'm here on request of many students to talk about mental health, maybe it's Mental Health Awareness Month. I'm not here to say that things are not done well at the middle school. I think things are done well, but I think it's just overwhelming, the issue of mental health. I talked to Mr. Vetra and Ms. Anderson today about what I could say when I talked about it, and both of them were like, this is all we do. So I know we've already hired an extra person next year as a counselor, as a mental health, but I think more needs to be done. And the two things I think need to be done, as Maddie said, is education teachers. As a teacher, I don't feel fully equipped to help as much as I would feel I wish I could. And I have two stories to explain that. I spend every morning standing between the room and the white pod watching students come in. I like to just talk to students, I like to say hi to their name. But I'm also mentally in the back of my head checking major, four students are there, because those four students have had suicidal issues in the past. And I was thinking about that, and I'm thinking, you know, that's really poor teaching, because I'm not doing anything to really help them. And how do we know how to help them? But I just know, hey, they're here today. That's not what we do in a lot. And I want to be able to do more. So I'm asking for policy, professional development, issues to help educate teachers to be better with mental health and with trauma-sensitive schools. And Mr. Anderson gave you this book called Trauma-Sensitive Schools, and a lot of the data I gave you is coming from this book, and it's asking for professional development in that issue. My second story deals with the second to certain, second or third point in this, which is why for students of color and why for students of LGBTQ? I had a class this summer, we do a win class at middle school, where you get to teach a class that you want to teach, and twice a year you can do that. And so I taught a class called Voices from the Altarists, thinking, we didn't really have our straight and gay alliance like we usually do during lunchtime, as we do in the past. And so I thought, well, let's do this. And I've had like 20 students, we met every day for half an hour for six weeks. And I thought, okay, good, since then, talk about LGBTQ community issues, issues of race, and let's figure out how do we support each other? How do we make this a school issue? And immediately, overwhelmingly to me, it became a mental health class. That was the concern. Because if you look at this data, students of color, students of LGBTQ are twice crippled the issues of trauma sensitivity and mental health because of the way the institutional racism and because of understanding and not understanding what's going on in those communities. So we also need more professional development about diversity, about culture, and about LGBTQ community.
Amy Marshall.
Amy Marshall, who you mentioned before. I have two students who are junior in college now, and thanks to the school district's elementary and middle school students for that. And I've talked to you before about diversity. I was listening at the beginning, and always I'm struck by how much our mission focuses on the strengths of our diverse community. And I really feel like there's lots of ways that the school district could be working with those ideas in ways that it is not yet. So I heard from a friend who's got a kid at the middle school that this notice went home about growing concerns about mental health issues, particularly about self-harm up to and including suicide. I began speaking to this board about these kinds of issues with the I am a Lala K diversity. I offered my services as a consultant. Most recently, I offered a series of seminars which all SDMA employees and board members were invited, not a candidate. The report that ended up concluding my work as my operator, my services as a consultant, included the following comments, which were stated by community members and school personnel. The district's support for diversity is both cursory and rather creatively creative, not from a lack of desire, more a lack of knowing what to do and how to support. Quote, "At times, staff seem culturally insensitive to the lack of experience with diversity." Quote, "The district and building leadership needs to educate themselves to hold themselves to the same values." Quote, "We have a culture in Menominee where some people are actively and blatantly district-wide hostile." And then staff members need to learn how to have good conversations, quote, "so students know they are being heard." What has happened since then is important, but it's clearly not enough. I would like to know how the strategic plan addresses these needs and concerns with resources and with an assessment of the impact of whatever plans are put into place. I would refer you to the board also if it happens to the resources that staff offers. You have mental health specialists, you have LGBTQIA+ specialists, you have diversity professionals who are really interested in supporting the students here. And I would hope that you would make use of this student resource to help the students and help the teachers help the students as well. So the request to know about the strategic plans that this request for response, any questions to the board that we can do with the staff and your community?
We will be discussing the strategic plan later in the evening. That's all, anyone else? Revenue and expenditure reports.
Okay, so revenue and expenditure reports for the month of April. We don't have a lot of changes or additions to the revenues and expenses over March, but we'll take a look at the expenditures by function first. So overall, for the month of April, we ended the month at 56.48%, compared to the same time last April of 2018. We were at 56.27%, so relatively close. For our Fund 27, that's our special education fund, we're slightly higher than we were last year at this time. We're at 66.85% in comparison to 65.71%. And then our Fund 50, which is our food service, we're higher there this year. We're at 72.55% compared to 69.64%. Our expenses by object is the next report that we're going to take a look at. This report is for all of our funds, not just our general fund 10. This incorporates all the funds. And for April of 2019, we're at 61.7% compared to 67.79% last year. And as you can see, like I had mentioned before, we had a debt service refinancing last year, which shows on this report, which caused our expenses to be higher because of that refinancing. We've talked about that in the past. Otherwise, relatively on track there. And then the last report, the revenue report. If you'd like to take a, open that up and take a look. Overall, our Fund 10 revenues through the month of April were at $15,475,753.39. Our Fund 21, that's our gift donation fund, through April, we received $155,789.31. And then for our Fund 27, Special Education Fund, we're at $987,795,029. Does anyone have any questions? Does anyone have any questions?
Two.
Got two. One, on the expense by object, there's a line for apparel. What apparel?
That would be electronics.
Okay. My other question is probably unanswerable tonight, but you always hear that special education funding is way less, way underfunded. And how much, and we don't know how much we get, but how much are we actually spending that goes beyond what we get for special education? Are we, do you have any idea, or can you find that out?
Actually, that was part of my testimony to the Joint Finance Committee. It was close to four million dollars.
Four billion.
Yeah.
Wow, okay.
So it is answerable tonight.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, Lee.
Thanks for the batting practice. Break down the bell.
Okay, going to the letter J, Board Member Superintendent Communications. Any Board Members said anything they'd like to speak about this evening?
I just want to say congrats to the Maui F A livestock judging team. They won the state championship.
He won the state dairy judging contest individually, but the team didn't place, doesn't get a national championship. It's a no.
I was hoping it's gonna go to you.
It'll go, but just not as.
Anybody else? I would like to just talk about a couple of things. I signed up for the webinar on social media, which was very helpful, and later on you'll see in Word docs, and it's been sent to you, some information about that actual webinar that I attended for homework for the spring retreat, and I just want to let you know that I thought it was very helpful. There's a lot of things we've already discussed that we already know, but then I will send you through it as well. And second of all, I'd like to say that I was at the Spring Swing on Saturday night, and it gets better every year. It's a lot of fun. The talent is just amazing, from seventh grade on up, it's just outstanding. And I always appreciate a chance to go. And also, I was lucky enough to win in the silent auction. Tickets, four tickets for an A Claire Express game, which of course, you know, my passion is baseball, so I was excited about that. Thank you.
Now I know to say something. So I also went to the Spring Swing, and it was the first time that I've gone, and I had no idea what to expect, but the desserts, let me tell you, are amazing. And I'm gonna one-up you on the baseball tickets, not that I'm a baseball fan, but I did win the four tickets to the Twins game, so I hope they have a flavor.
Since you're not much of a fan, Trisha.
I think, I think Joe said he'd be able to take my.
Yeah, sure. It was, it was a lot of fun, though. And the bass player at the high school, in the high school dance band was just amazing. I was shocked at how long it took.
They also had alumni that come and play as well, and then they also played with the current dance band, so that was quite, quite awesome. And a dance contest, which is always kind of fun to watch. So, thank you. So we do have arts, that's definitely, definitely was amazing to see them playing. Thank you. Anybody else, any other Board Members? Dr. Joe?
Okay, just a few things. First of all, recently I had a conversation with Jimmy Anderson from the Dunn County Board, and Dunn County is looking at what can be done to increase broadband in our area. And Jim said that he's heading up a committee on this, and he knows that broadband is very important for education, and we had a brief discussion about how our students use technology and how broadband is very important. Unfortunately, there's several areas in Dunn County, and including in the, in the school district here, where some homes simply just don't have access, or, or the access is unreasonable or not reliable. So one thing that Mr. Anderson suggested is that he is going to be looking at grants, and Dunn County is going to be looking at possible solutions, and was wondering if the board would have any interest, our school board, in terms of considering some sort of resolution, supporting that idea of broadband expansion. He was not asking for any kind of financial commitment, more a commitment that it is important for education, and is something that this board would want to support. I have not taken the liberty to draft anything up yet, I thought that I would, you know, mention to the board, and, you know, unless there's any kind of objection, I do plan to, to work on that, something to consider this summer.
As critical as you can get, though.
I wasn't anticipating the objection. A couple other things I included, today we received an email, Board Members did, I wasn't sure if each Board Member was listed in the email, but there was an invitation for the night with Mr. Wright, with the Wakanda fifth graders, kind of culmination of their project-based learning activity, studying architecture and rainbowing Wright. And that's something that my oldest was involved in last year, and I would highly encourage Board Members, if you haven't had a chance to attend that yet, it's gonna be a wonderful event. It is May twenty-ninth, I believe, let me make, no, I'm sorry, May twenty-third, from four thirty to six fifteen. And Mrs. Hossi and the whole fifth grade team just do a marvelous job, and it actually led to a trip for my family to falling water, and it was, it was really something else. On a more difficult note, I think everyone's aware that we did have a situation at the middle school last week. There was a situation where a note was found, and it had some threatening verbiage on it, and I just really want to say kudos to Mr. Betcher, Mr. Anderson, the entire staff, and the students who did a really good job, you know, working through the situation. It was resolved, it was figured out exactly what was behind that note, and appropriate discipline measures were taken. We did communicate with parents, and we are asking parents to make sure there's a discussion with students about, you know, how, how important it is to consider the health and safety of everybody in our schools, in our community, in our society. It's just, it's really troubling to see how much of this there is out there, and I'm just really thankful that we had such good follow-up in our school. But the consequences are very, very steep, you know, whether we're talking about the legal consequences, the consequences here at school in terms of suspension, pre-expulsion or expulsion, and it's just something that really needs to be talked about. So that's my report for tonight, and thank you for your attention.
Joe, could you tell me where the, I don't think it said where the, Mr. Wright, you know Mr. Wright's book, is that the?
Yes. Yeah, I think it's the Mabel Tainter.
It is the Mabel.
Okay. All right, thank you. And I guarantee it's great event as well. Item K, monthly permit report.
Any questions on that tonight?
Here we go. Item K, a motion, man, to approve, to approve the consent agenda. Dan?
Second.
All right. All right. Any, any questions? Okay. Here we go.
I don't know why it's not saving her.
Okay, so motion passes.
Yes, unanimously, I'll have to go in.
Okay, thank you. Next, I call for a motion to approve the personnel actions.
So.
Penny?
Oh, Heather was first, I was second.
Okay, sorry, Heather, answer. Any questions? Okay, motion passes, thank you. Okay, going to the action agenda? We take these one at a time?
Yes.
Okay. All right. A, approve the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen employee handbook revision, scheduling of overtime hours.
So coming up in discussion, we're gonna talk about the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty handbook. But in the background I shared with the board, what we have found is that the scheduling of overtime hours, the language that's in the current handbook, really does not provide very good direction or procedures in terms of trying to schedule overtime. And Kevin Tomaszewski has communicated with the custodial maintenance staff, and there were no objections to the change in language. So this will, it's also included for next year's handbook, but we thought it was important to square it away right now. There may be some situations coming up here at the end of the month, especially around Memorial Day holiday, where overtime could be needed. There is more overtime in our district now than there has been, and that's a good thing, because it's a result of so much use of our facilities. Now, I am happy to say that once this language was discussed, actually, the overtime that we were concerned about got filled with volunteers, but there still is the potential for that to happen. So we are requesting the board approval of this language change for this year's current handbook, and then also to be added, we'll, we'll still have further discussion about next year's handbook. So we are requesting your, your approval tonight for the change to this year's handbook.
I move we change the handbook.
Thank you. I'll second.
Any other questions or discussions? Okay, letter B, your action agenda. I'm looking for a motion to propose three seventy-four student contests and tournaments.
Both agree, adopt the policy three seventy-four.
Second?
Second, thank you Penny.
David? Joe, you think this takes care of that issue as far as parent involvement or supervision?
I do. You know, we already had a first reading on this, and the first draft was, the, the board made it seem like it was probably too restrictive in the event that we had some elementary or middle school students who wanted to participate in a, a national competition or convention. Worked with Mr. Betcher on this, we did review some other policies, there's not a lot, whole, whole lot of guidance out there for that younger student. But I did want to put this in the consent agenda, just because, you know, there was a lot of discussion about it, but I do think this, this fixes those concerns.
Any other discussion? Here we go. Motion carries. Okay. Letter C, item K, motion to approve the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty transportation contract.
So.
Heather.
Who's second?
Heather.
Oh, sorry. Any discussion?
We had a meeting with the Haways, and I'd say Ryan and Kyle, they were pretty good. So we offered them the same compensation increase that we did for staff, and talked about issues that they had, and seeing the same things that we see, staff, drivers, that kind of stuff. They did indicate that they're having three buses this year, and possibly a short bus as well. And cameras are installed on all the buses, they're looking at, one of the things we did talk about was the possibility of working with them on a grant, through our school safety grant, and upgrading some of the camera equipment that they have on the buses with the, with that grant. But no, I think it was a good meeting, and they, they seemed happy, because they're facing a lot of the same costs, the districts and businesses all around, there are increased transportation costs, you know, for parts that they get, supplies, a lot of things that they brought up, they're attempting for some increases that they're facing.
Thank you for serving as our representative, much appreciated.
Any other questions? Do you know what they run their, for fuel on their buses? Diesel, propane?
Diesel.
Diesel.
Yeah. To the best of my knowledge.
I remember one time one of the buses were propane, I don't know if they went away from that.
Yeah, I don't think they have any propane, I don't think they have. I just had this thought, you know, bus drivers, I just saw a thing on the news about this bus driver who was an incredible woman, and how she cared for all her students and everything. And I'm thinking about, you know, bus drivers, you know, they see the kids each time for us, and is there a way, do we have a way that bus drivers, if they suspect a kid's gonna have a bad day or something's going on, that they can talk, tell somebody about it?
That does happen from time to time, and I know that they do provide some training economy transportation. Our principals, they have many communications with the bus company. Sometimes the bus drivers report it back to the company, and then either Tom or Ryan, one of, one of those guys will call over, but I'd say the communication's good on that.
Okay, great.
David? One of the things we found as a parent was to build a good relationship with the bus driver, and so if she sees anything, you know, on the bus or whatever, she just doesn't hesitate to ask the bus to stop.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on to discussion. By A, presentation of E L A S E L project.
So Tony Whiskey, Lori Smith, and Tara Ellison are co-entitled for vice with this presentation, and I was fortunate to attend a Rotary meeting where Lori and Tara had presented some of this, and it really is something I think the board would be very interested in, so thank you all for being here tonight.
Hi, everyone. I'm Tara Ellison, the district reading specialist and literacy coach. I think I know most of you, but there are a few faces that I haven't seen before. I'm like nervous, I talk to many teachers all the time, I have a kind of feeling, so I'm.
We won't break it from us.
I know, I know you won't, I know you mean me. But. Did they do, did one of you? Well, Lori Smith.
I think it's like the Tara show.
All right, so we're going to kind of talk about three things, a little bit about literacy and like general literacy things, and then zero it into some books and library with Lori, and then a little bit more with S E L things, with mental health and things that we're doing, in kind of in relation to literacy, as one thread of what we do in literacy, and what we, one thread of our S E L, which we'll talk a little bit about. Oops, I went too fast, I'll ready. Okay, so looking at this, this is our literacy vision for our K twelve. So I'm going to kind of talk. So, I'm going to kind of talk in general, and kind of quickly, about literacy K-12 in relation to the four circles on the left-hand side. And if you think about all four of those pieces going together, they cover our Common Core literacy standards that are given to us through the state. And all of our K-12 classrooms are aware that all four kind of levels, so to say, work together for a literate person. Okay? So starting at the reading at the top, we, I would say almost all of our K-12 as a whole, we talk a lot about engaging kids in books, and getting them the right books in their hands, being the most important thing. So kids are kind of having control in what they're reading, and the engagement's higher, and the motivation to read is higher. That's a huge endeavor. I mean, trying to figure out, like, book selling, basically. Our classroom teachers are selling, selling books to kids all day long. "Oh, I just saw a great book, I know you would like." "Oh, I saw a handy book, I know you would like this." Those kinds of things, trying to get kids interested in reading. Our classroom teachers may use, so to say, like a mentor text to kind of model strategies about reading. And then the children are transferring the things that we're teaching them with a mentor text into the individual book choices that they choose. Okay? As we go up into the grades, you might see more of a whole class thought, where like every student's holding Romeo and Juliet. Okay? It shifts a little bit at the high school level, to a little bit, teaching a book instead of teaching, reading with any book. Okay? Or still doing that. Kids are still choosing the books that they want to read at the high school level as well. Just a little bit more whole-class novels. If you move over to the right, into the word study, you can teach word study K-12 as well. It looks quite a bit different in the K-1 classroom, where we're teaching them the rules of phonics and the alphabet. And going up into the upper grades, if you went into a high school classroom, you would see vocabulary words on the board and things like that. So, I mean, the shift is there. We see it a lot in our science classrooms. And it's actually interesting. Our science and social studies have these same standards, but they're in relation to their content area. So, K-12, there's word study. Keeping on going down a little bit to the listening and speaking, which I'm talking really fast, as I'm talking and speaking right now. But, um, you know, that starts really, in kindergarten, when we're teaching them to sit in a circle and look at each other, and be respectful in a conversation, all the way up to middle school and high school, where they're doing a digital media presentation, and they're talking to their classmates, and integrating sources to put into their presentation. So that is a thread in our literacy standards. And then finally finishing off in writing, we have writing units of study in our K-12 classrooms, where you're going to see different genres of writing, different purposes for writing, explicit instruction on how to write, and having an audience with kids to write to. So if the children can, you know, receive a letter, or the board can receive a letter, or, you know, just like having an authentic audience, and a variety of ways, writing a fantasy story, or writing an informational feature article. So trying to do a variety of writing experiences with kids. So that's literacy in a nutshell. How's that? And, okay. So, this kind of ties in quite interesting with some of the speakers that we heard earlier tonight. As they were talking, I was thinking, I mean, one of our, our goals is that kids can see themselves in books. Okay? Because when you know, when you're reading a book, if you can see that character or relate to that character, the book's gonna come more alive to you. So Dr. Bishop kind of made this neat analogy about mirrors, windows, and sliding glass doors. And that sometimes books are windows, where you can look out, and you can kind of see things that are real or imagined. And it isn't that great. We need kids to see things outside of the normie, you know? Sometimes, you know, when the light is right, we'll see a mirror, and the kids will see themselves. And then they can relate themselves into the bigger human experience. But really, the big catch is when they can open up this sliding glass door and step into this world, and they can develop empathy. And really, they can see what they can be outside of, where they are right now, and what others are experiencing. So we try really hard to provide these kind of books and settings for kids to see themselves. We realize that we don't have just, you know, middle-class white kids sitting in our classrooms. So we have to have different books and different experiences for our kids within books. So that's just a huge task in itself. But it's something that I talk with our literacy teachers all the time about, and we're constantly updating our classrooms, and that's gonna slide right into Lori right now.
See, kind of others?
Oh, one more slide, you're right. But really, I kind of talked a little bit about this, but really, we're doing a good job. Kids are, you know, seeing that they belong here in our classroom, and that they can find themselves in the books that they're reading, and develop an identity. And that's always gonna be a goal for us through books. So, K-12, we realize that we do have traditional library spaces, and we call them libraries and media centers, because we also have smart boards in there, and that's where we house an iPad cart, and we have Chromebooks, and lots of other resources for students to use. Speaking as an elementary principal though, I want to let you know that we don't foresee, at the elementary level, everything becoming ebooks. There's lots of good research out there that supports that reading for young readers is a very tactile experience, and that following along with your finger on the paper page as well as flipping the pages has a different sort of sensory input than it does just reading an ebook. And that there's reading for comprehension, and that that says that the paper book has better comprehension when you talk about deeper understanding. But that ebooks for scanning for information, or if you're doing research and you're collecting from multiple sources, that's much more highly efficient and a better way to organize yourself. So in fourth and fifth grade, we start looking at media resources more heavily for students to find information and collect information and organize information. And the middle school and high school also have very nice physical library spaces. And we're very fortunate here in Menami. I mean, could we always have more books and more resources? Absolutely. But between common school funds and site dollars, and supplemented by our PTOs at the elementary and middle level, we have scholastic book fairs, we're all looking at how do we make these resources as rich as possible. And then I'll just share, a couple years ago, I had a parent come to me, and she said, "Could you please help me? My daughter, who is half of a different race, is saying she can't find books that she feels like represent her." Well, what human being, what principal is gonna say, "No, I'm not gonna help you." So that became a bigger conversation that we had in an elementary principals' meeting, and then that trickled out to the library, and it also ended up going back to the diversity committee, where we talked about, could we do a better job of, first of all, identifying what we have? And we did that through inventories. Could we do a better job of promoting those resources by putting them on display and talking about them? Yes, we could, and so we've done that. And then we've made some concerted purchasing efforts as well, so that we have a better representation across minorities and other diverse topics. Okay, just a little quick comment. Our authors in general are getting, but this is not just like a Menami thing, like, in general, in our United States, we need more diverse authors writing the books, and recognizing those things. And it's something all, we're all facing, we're all trying. And right now, I mean, if you looked at some of our latest Newberry Medal winners, they are diverse books, but I mean, it hasn't always been that way. So, I mean, we are, as a reading profession, getting much better at this, and we'll continue to, you know, work with it in here at Menami. So, I don't want to give the impression that we would be lackful, but once it was sort of brought more to our attention, and it's kind of timely with what we're dealing with in our school and community, we made a conscientious effort to find more books on diversity and promote them with students and staff. Okay, next slide. So, in our elementary schools, we also have spaces called book rooms. And in these book rooms, there's level books. So there's a Fontes and Pinnell, that's just the name of two people, who came up with a system that helps us level books, A through Z, on the level of reading fluency and comprehension needed to be a good reader of that book. And so, but those are our resource to our classroom teachers, so that if there's a topic that they're covering, and there's information that's maybe at a higher reading level than some children can handle, we've done a nice job of purchasing a lot more nonfiction books, so that all students can find a book that's appropriate to their reading level and find good information in that. Also, we've also improved the end of the alphabet, so that students have very high levels of comprehension and who are very fluent readers can have more challenging content to read when we're covering a topic or a genre in a classroom area. And so again, you know, curriculum money has gone towards providing lots of good content in the book room. We've also used our site dollars and our PTO, and our book fairs have been very gracious about helping us flush these out. I will also say, to give Tara some credit, she came into some of our buildings and did what I would call a purge, because we had some very dated books in those rooms. And I think the only way you can sometimes get new stuff is to be willing to let go of some of that old stuff. And that really helped us with a transition from lots of fictional titles to make room for nonfiction titles. And then also, in the elementary schools, we actually have little libraries in every classroom. And we've worked really hard since we implemented Lucy Coughlin's about five years ago? Three, three years ago? Did we do writing before we did reading? Okay, that's why it seems like five years ago. We're not that far off. So each teacher has shelving at a corner of their classroom, where they actually have a selection of books that they're encouraging students in their classroom to read. And so then, the next picture shows a student with their individual book box, which is sort of like their mini library. And so teachers are transitioning out the books in their little library, and kids are transitioning out the books in their little box library, reflecting upon what's the teacher teaching about the genre, or what are we talking about with science or social studies with the related materials for nonfiction. So there's lots of layers to all of this that weren't there five years ago. You would see classroom libraries, K-12. And then, of course, we're expanding what we're doing with digital media. So the library's no longer a physical space. It can be anywhere that we have an iPad cart or Chromebooks. So 612 in our school district, we're very fortunate to be one to one with technology, and our students have lots of accessibility to online resources. And then kindergarten through fifth grade, we have shared carts that have iPads and Chromebooks. And so under teacher supervision, whether it's in the library or the classroom, we have district-supported apps and programs that students can use to either help them with skills or to help them find information and do good research. Sorry, it's not clicking quite on the...
I think it's over there by Jamie's computer.
Oh, point this way. So this is the transition slide. So this is Dr. Bill Daggett, and he's the founder of ISO, which sounds a little bit like a terrorist organization from the Middle East, but actually stands for the International Center for Leadership and Education. Bill Daggett has been around education for many, many years, and his emphasis on rigor and relevance is nothing new. But in the last few years, Bill Daggett and the people that he works with at ISO have come to recognize, just like the conversation that began here tonight in the school board meeting, that we have lots of socially emotional needs in our students in this day and age. And so they redefine this as rigor, relevance, and relationships. And that's what they call the new three Rs in what we call the ISO model. And so, he is recognizing that it's important to have academic rigor and relevance, but we have to make sure that we're also meeting the socially emotional learning needs of students as well. And so, we're going to the Model School Conference for a second year this year, and there are lots more about how do we become a better model school according to what the ISO organization is suggesting. Very research-driven, very highly regarded, not only nationally, but internationally. And so, I feel good that sometimes we hold our hat up as well. All right, in 2016, really DPI, the concept of a shift that SEL shouldn't be necessarily taught in isolation. It needs to be more integrated into the curriculum. Again, that's how we've kind of come to this point, talking about literacy and books, and how can we integrate SEL into the things that kids are already doing in the books that they're reading. Some of the curriculums that we are using in our schools, mine are Zones of Regulation, Superflex, our Second Steps curriculum, and Strong Teams. Those are really more the isolated curriculums that are taught, not necessarily, some of them, Zones of Regulation is more of a concept taught throughout. But I would say like Second Steps is taught more in that isolation component of a time. So it's not necessarily taught in, kind of, in conjunction with a book that a child is reading. So, but we need to find more ways, some of this came about, because we need to find more ways to integrate our SEL into the things that we're already doing, the great things that teachers are already doing. And so, I'm just bringing back models from the Model School Conference, and Bill Daggett. So rigor and relevance, again, has been around for a long time, and this is referred to as the Four Quadrants. So, I tried clicking it again, Tara. Okay, so this I find a much more understandable way of looking at the Four Quadrants, which talks about Quadrant A focuses on teacher work, where the teacher is the talker. The teacher prepares the materials. The students turn the materials into the teacher. Quadrant C is where students have to do a little bit more in-depth thinking, but they're not really applying what they're thinking. It's just more knowledge-based. And then Quadrant B is where students are working, but we don't necessarily know if it's the deep and rigorous kind of application that we want them to do with knowledge. So not everything we can do in a school day is gonna be in Quadrant D. But that's where we want to target what we're doing with students as much as possible. So, Tara, if you click the slide again. So the arrow here points to Quadrant D. That's our goal when we're doing educational planning, instructional planning, is to say, can we make this a Quadrant D activity for our students? And then if yes, then how do we do that? And then, if you click it again, it's also talking about the rigor and relevance as it applies to life and to work, those 21st century skills. So, we know that we probably aren't moving fast enough because the need always exceeds the capacity. But some things that we've accomplished here recently in embedding some SEL into what we are already doing is, two years ago, Gary Johnson had retired, but he came back and he co-tapped with some of us in soft heart health some information about resilience practices and mindfulness. And then we handed off the baton to district staff, and now the actual teachers at the high school have a unit where they talk about resilience and mindful practices. It's more on self-awareness, and what do you need to do when you find yourself stressed out or overwhelmed? What are some basic things that you can do? And then in the summer of 2017, a group of us met in the English department from a high school, and we talked about how it doesn't make sense to talk about suicide prevention and isolation. So we talked about how they're already teaching Romeo and Juliet. Perfect example of people with suicidal ideation and impulsive choices. And so, again, the process of teaching that Shakespearean tragedy, we can talk about who are the characters exhibiting adverse behaviors? What's going on with suicidal ideation? And then talk about the prevention steps. It makes the lesson about Romeo and Juliet much more relevant to the students, and they really seem to remember some of the things that we want them to do about suicide prevention much more deeply. And then a work in progress is that with a Rotary grant, I'm working with a group of people to work on the Candy Woodlong book, which has local historical relevance, and see if we can't develop some nice SEL elementary lessons that talk about empathy and perspective-taking, and those kinds of things, as that book is used in a fourth-grade classroom. So, we are headed down the road, and nothing builds confidence like success, but as you can see, we've got a long ways to go to get to that. can see, we've got a long ways to go to get to that unarroyal tiger on the end.
Thank you, lady.
You're welcome.
Does the board have any questions or anything pretty awesome weights?
In the reading part, are we doing any of the AR stuff with our kids or is that...
Accelerated reading?
Yes.
We don't purchase accelerated readers. We really deal like, you know, the computer can't give kids the feedback that it needs when they're reading a book with the overemphasis on the lexile of it. But definitely we provide an abundance of options more through, you won't, we have stuff to become like Epic, we just articles, there's a website through Wisconsin, what is that one called that we use articles from?
Lives Dash or something?
Yeah, anyway. But no, you do have definitely online areas to go and tons of actual books and not AR.
Nuzella?
Nuzella, thank you. Oh, we do do that, which is pretty similar to that. At 612, we do use an app to just Nuzella. 68 building-wide and 912, a smaller number of kids, more editing intervention.
Why is it my kids don't like Nuzella? Like that's the one complaint, like when I look at grades, oh, it's got Nuzella or whatever. I like to read and I grew up reading Vic and Jane, so this is a far cry from that.
Right. I think part of it is the questions are hard. I mean, the questions are pretty, they're, they're not just one easy answer, so it challenges our students to really think. They're test-like questions that they would standardize tests.
So you don't have to answer this, but my daughter's lazy is what you're saying.
I didn't say that.
So do you want to talk about stamina for just a minute with my readers or...
I, it's a constant level of our students is developing stamina to sit in first of year through a book. I mean, even my son, he wants to be outside or play video games instead of putting his eyes in a book. So it is something we're all struggling with, not just you. You know? Exactly. So we are, we have a competing value system right now, so I was hoping they would like Nuzella a lot just with the online component of it. We use it in middle school, integrated with science and social studies. Our science and social studies teachers are using the content they're teaching, matching it up to Nuzella. And so then the kids get one or two Nuzella articles a week related to what they're already teaching in science and social. So to me, it was like, oh, bingo, perfect. So yeah, we'll see. And I guess we're excited that kids are reading however they're reading it, with whatever book or media. But you know, Tara talks about this importance of understanding deeply and then being able to share what you know. And those are the parts where we sometimes get a little pushback from kids because it takes more mental energy and it takes more discipline. So you know, we're not here to discourage any child from using media as a venue, but sometimes media can be lazy when you're just doing the scroll and you're not doing what you need to do with that content. Does that make sense?
Dan?
Yeah. Just wondering, you're talking, trying to get kids to read a lot of books. Are you tracking those and looking at, you know, which kids are reading tons of books and which kids are not and that kind of stuff?
I was just in a fourth grade classroom on Friday and yes, after independent reading time, the teacher had them take the time to quick, you know, write down what they accomplished during reading time that day. I think that is a very common thing that happens. We do purchase, maybe you want to speak of this point, a Learning Ally, which does the tracking for us for some of our more at-risk kids and what we've seen with that. So Learning Ally is a online, books online and the books will read to the student. So it is 612. It is designed for students with a reading disability or a need for accommodation in reading. Some of our EL students have access to that. They need to be nominated by a teacher and then approved in order to access that type of a program. But there is, I would say, every book that we've ever been able to search, they've had it, including the majority of our textbooks. I don't know if we even found one of our textbooks that are not on that system. So it allows for access to that. And it also allows, one of the benefits that kind of came about this is you have a group of students that are doing a lip circle in the middle school and you only have five of these books, but there are six kids that want to read that book. Learning Ally, you can set up a child and or one or two or three kids are on Learning Ally, they can have access to that book. So you're not excluding a child that really wants to read one book and say, oh, before we would have just said, oh, you'll have to pick a different book. And for some kids, that's a deal breaker. That's, well, wait a minute, I don't want to read that book or I don't want to read that book with that group of kids. I want to be with this group of kids. And so that's kind of a deal breaker for kids and then they're not interested in the book. So Learning Ally is allowed, that was one of the benefits, but I think came about that we didn't realize what was going to come about. And so kids can have access to that. And they can actually have access on their phone if they need it or on their Chromebook or their iPad. They can really access that however they want to. And so we have, tons of kids on it and it does track.
I'm constantly recruiting these kids.
And so kids are, they can pick their own book, they can go on the books that they want to, or a teacher, that teacher that nominated can actually assign the book to them. So kind of both ways. And they have access all summer long. And so we're doing a little push, Tara and I are the teachers, to get teachers to use it and to get their students to use this over the summer. So.
Dan?
I like that. And you're, you say you're approving kids, tons of kids.
Yeah.
So I, when you were talking at first, I was concerned that it was only a select few kids that would be able to use the ISE.
Well, there is stipulations based on the contract that we signed, that it really truly is designed for students with a reading disability or a need for a reading accommodation. So it really truly isn't an open license where all of our middle school and all of our high school kids can have access to it. Because of what's on there and the amount of books that in the contract we sign, there really is some stipulations. But our stipulation is if a teacher nominates a student to say, I believe that this child needs this, we are, we are honoring that request from the teacher.
Are we limited to a set number or anything?
We are not limited, it says it's open, but again, if we have, if we have all of our students on there, that will red flag us because you can't say that 100% of our students is in need of a reading accommodation. So. And many students don't, don't need that. They don't, that's not an accommodation they, they need. So we wouldn't give that to a student if they really truly didn't need it and wouldn't necessarily use it or want to access it.
And I know, I know we have to keep moving on our agenda, but I do want to point out too, that at the elementary level, at parent mentor conferences, it's a common check-in at each of the conferences to talk, discuss which level your child's reading at and what the goal levels are for moving forward. So that's another way where some of that is tracked a little bit.
David?
One of the stories that a friend of mine tells yet years ago was my youngest, when he was in grade school, was bragging that he was at a level UT or something like that. And that's the last level they have, he said. I mean, you know, he was, he said, I just don't know what I'm going to do next. Good afternoon, my youngest, but, but he was pretty proud of the fact of where he was in the level and his reading skills and that kind of stuff. So it makes a difference.
Thank you. Dan?
Yeah, I'm sorry to ask so many questions, but I was talking to a principal recently and they're using AR and he said, when you look at the statistics and the achievement scores, those classes were, if it's a high number of AR books read, they'd be better. So that's why I was asking if you're tracking these, looking at the number of books that kids are, are developing.
Thank you. I would like to say a little bit, it brings back, I'm probably aging myself kind of like I did earlier about Basil back in when I was in third grade. Vic and Jane?
Oh, yeah, yup.
And I'm a voracious reader, so somehow I was able to survive without this wonderful stuff that's coming up now. Thank you.
Same here.
Well done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wait, come back.
Discuss plans for new MHS STEM certificate.
Right.
All right, so tonight, what I got for you is just an informational piece of some work that several staff members at the high school have been working on, not only with each other, but also building level administration, organization, our student organization advisors and myself, to take a look at establishing what we think is a unique opportunity here in Bonnheim with having a STEM certificate. Student representative spoke about the GEAC computers, our gold scholars program. And that program is set up where students have a set criteria that they have to work through in order to receive that recognition. Right now, there currently isn't a complement for that related to STEM at our state level. But our staff felt like taking a look at the courses that we have available and the opportunities that we have available for our students, this is something that they would like to provide as an option for students starting next fall. So what we have is a list of what, what that proposal would include as far as coursework and establishing a set of standards related to attainment in the classes focused on a STEM emphasis, as well as in addition to what we would consider our minimum required credits for graduation. The thing that I like about this is this continues to evolve as a conversation as we've gone throughout the school year, as they talk about it, have talked about it throughout the year, you have the list of courses that we find that actually have a very solid STEM emphasis. That list grew through all those conversations. And right now, this is not what I would consider a comprehensive list, but before we got too far down the road, we wanted to make sure the board was aware that this was something that we were working on because we think we have an opportunity to kind of be out in front of the curve with this and offering this as an opportunity for our students at the high school. In addition to the draft proposal that's in there, you know, really where some of this started from was when we started doing our academic and career planning work and identifying the STEM careers that are in demand. So the second document that I included in your background information was a list of STEM careers that U.S. Bureau of Labor and Statistics has put out recently in taking a look at both the growth, projected growth in those areas over the next few years. So we see a nice tie, not only for the students that want to pursue STEM careers down the road, but also as we look at our academic and career planning process that right now starts in sixth grade to start informing some of those course selections. Are there any questions?
Tindall?
I have a friend who works for Milwaukee Tool, is an engineer. And just in the last couple of years, they have increased the number of engineers on their staff by, just this fall, I think he said they averaged 70 engineers. And they've already added 200 and some in the last year or so. Just crazy the amount of engineering companies are employing. So when I see some of the figures that you have on your second attachment as far as increases and disadvantages in that, I think this is really being a true interview and very tiny.
One thing I noticed that there wasn't anything in agriculture. I think, there is. There is?
Yeah. And that actually is when I, when I reference the ongoing conversation as far as lists, you know, really what we find is as we start going into this, it leads to a question about what about another, another course that we offer. So that list will, is likely to grow before we finalize in the fall. When we take a look at some of our A and natural resource classes, we offer, students can take those for science credit as well. So that was one thing that, you know, was pointed out to me this morning, that there's the potential that some things were left off the list. So, you know, we continue to work, it's why it says draft right now as, as we move forward and even the student organization, but they, you know, you take a look at the experiences that they have at their state conference.
Chris? This does happen to work in place where there's an overabundance of certificates, they don't seem to have any tangible value. What does this actually do for students that wouldn't have been done in his normal advising? Because a lot of the career paths that come out are of course career paths you do in post-secondary education. And so I wonder if sometimes creating certificates that don't necessarily either advance the interest in education or that maybe kind of pushes into a focus that there's no guarantee that that focus is going to help them on how they should talk without that post-secondary education? Can you maybe give a little more details about what advantages this gives to students or what that puts in their backcourt?
So when the staff have been having these conversations, one of the things that they found is as we look to take that next step with academic and career planning to help make the connection to not only what the student will be prepared for as they leave, but the next step in their pathway, you know, and having a wide range of opportunities for students. So helping to focus those conversations with, with the students, not just in a guidance and counseling setting or an academic advisement, but at a classroom level. One of the other aspects too, when we take a look at helping students to market themselves or sell themselves and they are applying for their apprenticeship opportunities, their co-op jobs, but then even when they're looking at choosing post-secondary options, the staff felt that this was one tool to help guide those conversations with students. So as far as the values of students, focus and helping our staff and guiding that those conversations right now, that's where we see a key piece of that.
So does that mean that there, because okay, I'm not following that, or is it the reason for them to follow?
Go ahead.
Okay, so if it, what you're telling me is that it really does help students understand what they're doing that adds clarity to them because of course the teachers are understanding what's happening. So it helps them be able to articulate what they do and what value their education has. Is that the case here, developing certificates for all the other areas of focus that you would see kids going into another different career path, you've done the same equal or two, they could implement or to what their vision is going forward? And it gives them that flexibility for the different types of educational focuses that we have at high school. It seems like there's a lot of focus on STEM and prioritizing that. And that seems to marginalize lots of other students not having the opportunity to develop a special way in which they can articulate their future or their passion or their learning.
Well, I think it has to be an ongoing conversation as to what our opportunities for students are. You know, again, this came out of the recommendation from our staff at the high school, seeing value and providing such an opportunity for our students.
David?
One of the things that my friend from Milwaukee, he'll actually go to schools and present and if he had, or I see this being kind of neat, is he could come to Bonnheim and students that are pursuing something like this, they're offering to pay for the schooling, provide internships for students to come right into their engineering, you know, department at their plant and that. And so it kind of gives them, students that are already predisposed to things like that, it gives them a chance to get their education paid for and to get a great job like that.
Chris, did you have something to say?
I did. So it is concerning that if this is something that's useful for some students, that it's not being pursued in a way that allows the same kind of emergence of that desirability and self-understanding for other students as well. So I think if you're making policy that is for high school students and that's really pushing them towards a career focus, to isolate some students as being special because they get special jobs, they get special earning and that gives them a special advantage for that's in their careers when other kids don't have the same opportunities, that's very troubling.
David?
We already have opportunities for other students, CNAs, things that are being generated. Students are already getting certificates and things out of high school that allow them to pursue opportunities in agriculture. I'm sure some of the other organizations at CLA and some of those have... I'm sure some of the other organizations at CLA and some of those have career paths that some of those students pursue. I know on the FFA side, they have proficiency degrees that students get, whether it be in dairy, beef, there's just a ton of things that they can pursue and get proficiencies in an organization that will help them further it. So I see this not as a negative, but as a way to enhance opportunities for kids. And anytime we give kids more opportunities, more different things, I think that will win us, it's moving us forward.
Chris?
My first point is I see it more as a motivator. I could see where a kid would get really interested in maybe a class or two short, or maybe their GPA is kind of questionable, or maybe it's not around that three-two, or maybe this might push them to excel a little bit more, get interested in something. I also echo Chris's point that I think this could be a gateway or starting point where we could add other certificates or kind of think of it like at a collegiate level, like a minor basically, or an emphasis, so that when they are applying to colleges, they can say, I have this certificate in liberal arts, or, you know, whether it be in mathematics or STEM field or agriculture. But I think, tack also what Dave is saying, we already do have some of these things somewhere in place, and I go back to like FFA is a great example of it. But mainly I see it as a motivator. I think it's something that kids could get interested in actually. So I like it, the GPA may be slightly low, but I don't want to exclude either, so it's a starting point.
Okay. Okay. Who else? All right. Letter C, reduce to parent handbooks for 2019, 2020.
So every year at this time, we present the handbooks to the board for your review. As you can see, very few changes. Most of the changes would be editorial in nature, updating staff names, bell schedules, et cetera. But one thing that probably is, would be considered one of the more major changes would be at the middle school in terms of how cell phones will be handled. And Mr. Betcher has been working with his staff, and it's been recommended that they'll be tightening up the use of cell phones next year. Essentially, cell phones will need to remain in the locker unless there is a special request from a teacher where it would be needed for an educational purpose. Other than that, pretty much editorial in nature.
David?
I think that's so awesome. My seventh grader does not have a cellphone yet, and I hear about it all the time. And now I can say, see, you won't be able to take a picture.
David?
Yeah, I think we have one-on-one technology with kids, they really don't need a cellphone. I think that's just a distraction that they can leave them in their lockers. I hope.
Was this Mr. Betcher's recommendation?
Yes.
I'm sure this one, just, you know. Any other questions?
Oh, Mr. Betcher, are you ready for the Q and A?
Jim?
This for lunch, too?
Yes.
Yep. So when will leave you permitted to add their phones while at school?
Before school and after school.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Do I, Mom?
Nope.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chris?
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble finding it now. There was something about the elementary school and smart watches are allowed as long as they don't become distracting in the learning environment, which is almost impossible for teachers to be able to pay attention to what they're teaching and how they're engaging, and then to be watching for what's going on with smart watches. And it seems to me that what I've seen kids and how they engage with their smart watches is like many cell phones. And I can't help but say that that's probably a mistake for trying to get kids at that age to be focused on the learning and their classmates and on their teachers. That's a real big distraction. And that temptation is might be something that kids at that age aren't able to actually resist. So just thinking about that one. Give me a pause to consider.
Anything else that your principals have in common? Smart watches?
We could go there. They just started popping up this year after winter break. And we're in fifth grade, and we talked to the teachers about it. And so far, they haven't been an issue. So I'm okay giving it a year to see how it goes, and we might be coming back to you next year, like Mr. Betcher has said, and just saying, we're done with them.
Tricia?
I can't speak for the iPhone watches, so if anybody has one of those, I think you can have one. But like with my Garmin watch, most of it, most of the functions that really you can do something with, you can only do if you have your phone on Bluetooth and with you. So it's, but again, I don't know.
No, that, well, unless, I've got one of the older versions, so unless the versions are different, it's the same thing. If I don't have my phone in my vicinity, it really doesn't do anything, other than tell me the time and maybe the weather. So my steps.
Right.
Any other questions?
Okay. Okay. Letter D. Discuss recommendations from the extracurricular coaching compensation committee.
So I really appreciate all the work that this committee did. I was headed up by Savannah Hoyt and Caleb Hunt. Sam's our HR director, and Caleb is the athletics director at the high school. And we had several of our staff members on the committee, and they spent a lot of time reviewing everything. And to make it, to make it short, they took a look at all the different assignments that we have and tried to make it into something that's a little more equitable, a little more fair. It does come with a price tag. And board members, you've always seen the information. I'm sure Caleb and Sam have spent a lot of time explaining this to you if you'd like, or if you want to just ask questions of them, and that's fine as well, whatever your preferences. Any questions for Sam or Caleb?
Dan?
I just want to say that you and I had a great discussion about this. And I was wondering about where the soccer and the track and field coaches, they have tremendous amount of events and, you know, work. I was just wondering where they fell and why.
And did you, did you join through this? Okay, perfect.
Could you maybe just talk a little bit about the makeup of the committee?
Sure. Okay. So we, we met about five times, beginning in January, and we had, Tricia was there with us, and then several, we put it out to all of our lead advisors and our head coaches, and asked if they were interested in participating, and if they weren't, they could send an assistant coach or assistant advisor. And we started with the winter, during winter sports, and then ended up finishing here with spring sports. So we had a little bit of transition throughout with some of our coaches, some that started with us and didn't finish, and then vice versa. And then we had some consistent members as well that were there the entire time, you know, being able to give their input. We started out just by looking, talking about different, I guess, what, how our compensation model is set up, and then talking about trying to find some data from other school districts. And that's a very difficult task, because everybody does it a little bit differently. So one of the main goals that we have with this was trying to come up with a process or a model that could be explained as to why certain points were given, because we work with a point system. So it was trying to give some justification to each of the different activities and athletics, and then moving from there. Kudos to Craig Olson, who at the high school kind of took this, actually started this, and then we tweaked it quite a bit. And we were very fortunate to also be able to bring in some of our extracurriculars. As you, you know, can look at this, there's some weighted multipliers that kind of help with all of this. We start with the base number of points, and then looking at the different components and reasons for adding those multipliers. And so that's how we ended up where we were and where we are now.
Any questions for Caleb or Sam? So the price tag on, oh, sorry, David.
We have a bunch of the school.
Okay.
For Jim and Trish, anything that you guys, that came out of this that you have concerns with?
No, I was unfortunately making a release, because everything is scheduled, and I was out of town, I was reading all the emails and keeping up with it, and I thought they did a great job. Especially like part where you defined everything. And I mean, they put a lot of time and effort into kind of coming up with a rationale for why it's the way it is. And once they did that, I think it really fell into place, and what I could see, so.
Yeah, no, I, kudos to both of you guys for taking it. It was very clear the first meeting that this is, it was a big job to undertake. This last meeting I wasn't able to make, but I had emailed with Sam, and I just had a couple of questions, and it was in regards to the way, like the musical and the play, the play where, you know, the director was compensated, and based on the fact that there's so many moving parts to that, Sam was really good about just responding. And I think, at the end of the day, I think you did the best that you could with it. And I think, you know, it's meant, the one question I did have was, is this meant to be reviewed on an annual basis?
So we, it's on a three-year rotation, and this is the anticipation. We, one, I can only kind of work on one compensation model at a time. So last year, we did the hourly, this year, we did the extracurricular and athletics, and then this next year, we'll look at teacher compensation. And it's my, you know, my desire to continue to look at all of these on a three-year rotation. So this, we planned it this way, but it's really a jumping off point. And we were also able to add, I know you saw the other attachments as well, but we were able to add some things at the middle school level. We had addressed some of the concerns and questions this year, at the end of last year, for this year, and then went through some discussion with some of our middle school staff and with Mr. Betcher and Mr. Anderson, that there's a need for a play and a musical throughout the year, so we're going to give that a whirl and have a play, offer a play in the fall, and a musical in the spring, to offer some additional opportunities for students that are interested in the arts in that way.
And that just makes me so, like, so beyond happy. Every three years is great, because when was the last time I did this?
That was my question, too.
Yeah. Or might know, it's probably at least ten years is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, yes, early when I started.
Yeah.
Caleb, any feedback from the high school that you want to share?
Uh, no, it went to the coaches, in our last athletic steering committee meeting, so they've kind of seen it for a while now. The biggest, the biggest thing that was, the point method is called the Fargo point method. If you do your research, look for the Fargo point method, you come up with all this Fargo banking information, that's really about it.
For the university.
Yeah, or, so you really have a hard time getting to it. So when we have plethora of points, you know, talking about four hundred thousand dollar budget item, and you're trying to figure out how you get to the point values for each sport and each co-curricular extracurricular, it's quite, it was a big task to determine how we got to those points. So we had the answer, but we needed to figure out what the formula was to get there. So this was a nice model to kind of get through and to kind of make sense of it. So now there's a rationale behind every point, and we can, you know, a three-year rotation determine who gets more based on participation and that kind of thing, rather than, well, I think I need an extra coach this year, well, so it was good that way. But the coaches, they've all had opportunities for feedback, some of them came in and stepped up, some have not, and some have, I think most of them are pretty comfortable with it.
So we'll bring it back to the board in June for your consideration. Thank you, Caleb.
Thank you so much. It's a long overdue, so, and it was asked to be done, so thank you for your work. Okay, letter E, discuss 2019, 2020 preliminary budget.
Yeah, and we were hoping that the state budget would be completed by tonight, so we could, we could work on, but I'm scared. Maybe by Thanksgiving or something, so I don't know.
It's getting close to the deadline.
Go ahead, Leah.
So as you can see by them on the attachments and in the board docs, there's a lot of work that goes into building this budget. At this point, it is just a proposed preliminary budget, and really the first step in building the 19, 20 budget. I'm going to go over some of the key assumptions going into this, like Joe just mentioned, you know, the state hasn't approved their budget yet, so a lot of these things are unknown at this time, but we're making assumptions and going from there. So assumption number one is our membership count, our membership, pupil count is always in September of each year, so we have to estimate what we think the count will be. And so in this assumption, we have an increase of approximately thirty-six FTE, full-time equivalency students. Number two, the revenue limit per pupil increase, we have at two hundred. We're pretty confident we'll get the two hundred dollar increase. What's unknown is whether or not it'll be on a revenue limit per pupil increase or categorical aid per pupil increase. So that's a little up in the air yet at this time. So this is our best estimate on that. So the, the per pupil aid, I see that's a table there, it says revenue limit per pupil, but it's the categorical aid per pupil. I have, that's the same as this year, it's the six hundred and fifty-four dollars. And then transfer service, same as eighteen, nineteen, I expect that to be relatively close. And it does include the two hundred dollar, or two hundred and fifty dollar contingency that we build in each year. So I'm projecting a balanced general fund this, for this upcoming year. The salaries and benefits increases have benefited, the staffing plan that was proposed is included. One item that I don't have yet is our insurance renewal for our property, general liability and work comp. I'm hearing from the insurance companies, they should have it ready for our June meeting, so we'll be looking for approval for that in June, once I receive it, because that is a July one renewal. I have been hearing possibly the property insurance might be a little higher because of some of the natural disasters and such. So we'll have to see, see how that looks, but that one could be a little bit higher. I don't anticipate the other ones to be.
Does anyone have any questions? David?
I'd heard Duncan Home, seven hundred buildings down from Smallwood, you know, so I think from the insurance side, they're taking a pretty good hit. So I expect some increase.
Dan?
Yeah, I'm, it looks, looks very, very good. And I noticed that there's been some that's gone down. And is there a reason why some areas have gone down, the fund ten?
In the different functions?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, yeah, if you take a look at the, what is this? The summary, I believe. So we have some decreases and increases for the various items. For example, our Fund Twenty-Seven transfer, that's an increase, increase in the staffing plan, there's a decrease in E-rate projects. So there's a whole list of different things, and they all fall into different, the different functions, so.
Thank you, thank you. I, you know, usually you anticipate everything going up.
Yep.
Anybody else? Okay. Letter F, just got policy six seventy-two, purchasing first reading.
Go ahead, Leah.
Okay, so I don't have G and H, all kind of go together. It was the recommendation of our auditors to take a look at our purchasing policy and revise them in accordance with the uniform, the federal uniform guidance that changed this year. And so in order for them to do their testing of our federal grants, they're going to be looking for the new updated purchasing policies this year to apply those tests. And so we looked at WASB policies, and our auditor gave us some sample policies, and then I think we also looked at some various schools and revised our policy in accordance with that. And then we added six seven two point one, the procurement policy that we didn't have before. And then we also added the cooperative purchasing policy as well. And then I think we also looked at some area schools and revised our policy in accordance with that. And then we added 672.1, the procurement policy that we didn't have before. And then we also added the cooperative purchasing policy as well.
So 672 is revision, and then the next two would be new policies?
Correct.
Any questions?
David?
The spending limits in here, are they pretty standard for school districts? The $500,000?
Yep, yep. And in fact, $150,000 there is, the $500,000 is our limit for our capital expenditures.
$5,000.
Or $5,000, I'm sorry. No, that's pretty standard. The $150,000 comes from, that's part of the federal guideline, so.
Jim?
So if we adopt these, like, you just, you know, getting renewals on insurance and stuff, will that change that process or procedure, anybody adopting these new policies?
I don't anticipate that, no.
Thank you very much. So I think we can kind of go right ahead into I, because that pretty much talks about G.
Yes, yes.
H, okay. All right, and we'll move on. Okay, I, 2019-2020 employee handbook revision.
So throughout the year, we continue to review our employee handbook and take notes, and also take a look at the policy resource guide recommendations from the School Board Association. We did send out, or we had a chance to discuss all these with the QIC groups, both the hourly and the teacher groups. And what you have there are the items that we're recommending for change in the employee handbook starting on July 1st. Are there any specific questions, or are there any that you'd like me to go through in more detail? They're pretty self-explanatory.
All the way along?
Okay, did this go through the QIC as well?
Yes.
And any feedback there?
Not so much on these. And there are a couple other language items that we looked at with the potential of paid leave changes, also limitations on paid leave, but there were some concerns with that. You know, right now, our employees, full-time employees are receiving 15 days of paid leave a year. And what we've seen, that's quite high. But when we discussed it, we really didn't come to a consensus. I think that's something we'll be looking at during the next year, but especially as we get towards the end of the school year here, not something that we're recommending for 2019-2020.
We're going to plan to do some more research after hearing from the QIC on that, on the issue. Okay. Penny?
Can I note that, I mean, obviously it doesn't affect the hourly employees the same way, but the hourly QIC was very much in favor of the changes. And there were just a couple people, it wasn't, I didn't feel like it was the consensus of the, of the teacher QIC group that most of the schools were opposed to it. There were just, I didn't feel like there was a consensus. I don't know. It was obviously a hot topic of discussion, but I think overall, everybody kind of saw eye to eye. And there were people that were a little more vocal about what they thought their opinion was versus some other schools. But I think that we're moving in the right direction.
Thank you, Penny. Okay. Policy 652.1, pre-admissions, letter J.
So the next two policies actually go to those employee handbook revisions that we're recommending. And employees of the school districts, full-time employees do receive free admission to school events. And also, as part of our wellness policy, full-time employees have the use of school buildings for wellness activities. And some of the discussion that we've had is that when we look at our substitute employees, we have some substitute employees that work on a very consistent basis. And especially when we look at trying to be creative with the shortage of substitute employees. You know, we are piloting a model right now for high school. But another thing we thought about is perhaps to work well with our substitute employees is any substitute that works 30 days or more in the previous year or the current school year, we can make that available to them as well. It doesn't require us to do anything different with our badging system. We already use the badging system with our substitute employees. So there could be a real slight loss of revenue in terms of admissions, but I don't see it being much of a factor. And the positive benefit we could get out of it, I think would be well worth that investment. So if the board approves those employee handbook revisions, we would also suggest updating those policies to include those substitute employees. Any questions?
Okay. Letter K, policy 830, use of school buildings.
That went along with the last one. I kind of grouped them together, sorry.
Okay. All right. And then L, strategic plan update. Just so you know, some of you may not have seen it, but there was some attachments that were added today, late in this morning. So some of you may not have had a chance to see those, but they're there.
Yes, we've been working with Studer, and they have a lot of moving parts, just like we do this time of year. And it wasn't until today that I received the update from Joanne Sternke. I wanted to compliment Dan and Chris for coming in. We had a very, very nice video conference with Joanne. And based on the feedback we received at the last meeting, it helped her understand what some of the ideas and some of the concerns were. So she did provide an updated timeline, and I think that's probably where, you know, I, some feedback could be used. Right now, we have the general framework, and I think based on the board discussion that we had previously, and based on the video conference with Chris and Dan, I think Joanne has some pretty good instructions for the modifications that need to be made. You know, first of all, with kind of the formatting, Chris had talked about, you know, kind of showing how the plan's going to flow together. And I think, Chris, I don't know if you had something to scan to her? She had made mention of-
I was sure there were notes saying, use Chris's arrows.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to share what I've heard, like, how you do a period of change on a flow chart. It's like, I'll just send her some materials and I'll show her.
That'd be good, because I know she's been waiting for that, and I don't know if that's part of why we didn't get this till today. But just an example of the flow that you're looking for. And then the other piece, when we look at the strategic areas, they really aren't broken down by level, elementary, middle, and high. And that was one of the parts for discussion. So there's going to have to be some additional work done. Brian and I talked about it a little bit this afternoon, we're be scheduling a conference call. I think that's really helpful. I think that'll give our plan a lot more definition, so we'll be working on that. So then what the timeline was shared was that by the end of the month here, we would receive, you know, kind of the first final draft. And we would share that with the steering committee. Maybe a few adjustments would be made. And then also with the district leadership team. We'd get that draft in a final stage, share it with the board on Thursday, June 6th. We do, we only have one board meeting between, well, actually, no board meetings between now and June 10th. And if the board wanted to approve it this school year, approval would happen June 10th. Certainly, depending what the board sees with the final draft, you know, this could be punted to the 4th Monday in June. Typically, we like to approve things at the regular meeting. But I think that that would be a backup option if this timeline is a little aggressive. Any thoughts on that?
I just want to talk a little bit about strategic plan. No thoughts about the timeline, Joe?
Sure.
But one of the questions that was brought up was about mental health issues and so on. The second pillar, student social emotional wellness, is there anything that, I guess, we have some, you know, a couple changes, Dan and Chris had worked with Joe and Joanne on that. Any comments on that, the conversation that you had about that?
Dan and Chris?
This was probably the one that we had these discussion about, because it was the one that was best found out, and one that made the most sense, and made a recent advance. I believe I might think really carefully about competing for teachers and non-teachers, especially after the test that we got from Mr. Collins. And thinking about how we want to train the people who are interfacing with students in that area. So I really feel like a lot, like, so when Lady brought that up, that is the first time I've seen like a real concerted effort to try and put some of this language into a pillar we're about. And what really is going to have to happen is that there's going to have to be some specifics about people visiting, have to put some money into those training, because I had some conversation and did some investigation. We have some resources that are available to us that don't cost a lot of money, but a lot of the best practices cost significant amount of funds. So being realistic about how we're going to attack that, I think that's where we're going to have to have a lot of discussion on the board, about trying to find maybe a way to be a good layer of some of the resources that we have in addition to the ones that we want to be able to develop.
Did you have any to add?
Yeah, I, that's, my question was, you know, we're doing a lot of things in area of mental health. And there are more things we could do. So, you know, how we mesh what we're already doing with the goals here that we're laying out and building on what we're already doing. So that's, that's what I, what I'm looking forward to, number two. And so, yeah, it's going to take the administration, it's going to have to probably figure out how to bring this pillar in with what we're already doing and also into the future.
I think Laurie Smith said it best about, we're not doing, it's not that we're not doing anything, we're doing a lot of stuff, like we've talked about, but it's overwhelming right now. And so it's just hard to fix everything all at one time. So I think it would be appropriate that maybe we do have this as a discussion item in future board meeting.
Dan?
Yeah, and we have to remember too, that this is a five-year plan. There's action plans for next year, but there's four more years that are not here. And so we have to look at, think about, what are, are the measurable goals going to be for next year, or are they going to be for five years from now? Where do we want to get?
David?
I mean, part of the plan process is we look at this every year, you know, that's just how we set it up. So it's a five-year plan, but we're continually going back to it and reshaping it or returning it. I guess my question to you, Amy, is what, do you want a discussion item, or do you need?
Well, I just think that maybe since it is overwhelming, that we need to discuss, because I know this emails came to me today, I don't think you all saw all of them, but some emails came through from support members, as well as Joe, and it seems to be some ideas that maybe we need to take a look at. Also, I was impressed with the idea that the students that spoke, as well as Mr. Collins, that they did bring some solutions to us as well to take a look at. And I think that's real important. And we can talk about this, you know, and like you say, I don't know, but we need to find solutions. And instead of, you know, we've got the problem named, I just think we need to continue to find solutions.
Penny?
I know that we've got a lot probably already on the agenda for the board retreat, but maybe that's a good place to hash this out and figure out how we're going to approach it from here on out.
Okay. So are you, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll add that, hopefully get to that as well. And if not, we have a backup plan to discuss there for the subsequent board meeting. Thank you, Penny. Anything else? Strategic planning. Since we did have a constituent ask about the strategic plan, will this be posted at some point for the community members and constituents to take a look at and see?
Absolutely. You know, it's not in the finalized form yet.
I realize that, but I just want to make sure that when it is in its final stage, that it will be communicated to our community.
Absolutely, we'll be marketing it.
I love this thing.
That was just seconds.
I thought so, I thought so, but to the benefit of the constituent that was here, I want to mention.
But it's a work in progress right now.
Thank you. All right. M, board member homework for upcoming retreat. It's been sent to you in a couple of emails, and now it's also on Board Docs. I would like to thank Heather for doing the research that she did and came up with some ideas. And I think it's good for us to all take a look at that, bring our own ideas. You will also notice that Al Brown also has asked us to fill out a questionnaire and submit it ahead of time. So be sure to do that as well. I will remind you, probably next, I think our retreat's on Wednesday, the 22nd, 6 o'clock. Does everybody know where old time is? Okay, make sure. We'll have dinner, and then we'll have our discussion. Al Brown will be facilitating. Joe and I have talked to him, and we have some ideas to go through with that, but dinner first. So we will see you there at 6 o'clock. Any questions? David?
The questionnaire, you're just supposed to write that down?
Yes. And send it to Al.
I don't think he's planning to sign up.
Oh, I thought he was, I'm sorry.
Are we doing an online survey at all?
No, we decided not to do that because we thought we'd go someplace different. Because we didn't want to use the last one that we did, because we have new board members. So we thought we'd wait for it. Dan?
I too want to thank Heather for that. I think there was excellent suggestions and ideas. We need, board members, I think, we should encourage board members to bring things like this to us.
Anyway, like I said, it kind of mirrored the webinar that I was able to participate in as well, so.
So then I'm clear, a word to answer these two questions, is that right?
Right. And I will communicate, I'll talk to Joe and make sure that we get it exactly right as to how that needs to be disseminated, who it needs to go to and how, in the next day or two. Anything else? Okay. I was related to next meeting day, support committees and reports. Any questions for the good of the order before we take action to adjourn? Okay, I'm going to pay a motion to adjourn.
Same move. A second.
Hey, I understand it.